Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, July 19, 2022. I have a meeting announcement. Council's recess begins tomorrow, Wednesday, July 20, and ends Thursday, August 18. And as always, all council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And just because council takes a break does not mean you cannot reach your council office. Many of us still work throughout that. It just won't be any official meetings. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kael Smith, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And during our moment of silence, we'd like to keep in our thoughts and prayers firefighter Captain Ellis, who passed away suddenly this past week, and also medic Dr. Douglas Rockasey. Did, Councilman, did you want to say anything before we begin?
I just want to say that Captain Jim Ellis was a below firefighter that served Station 32 in Butchtown for the past so many years, but prior to that was in, is in the East End. So our thoughts and prayers are with the family.
And also a member of, a resident of District 2 in Banksville. So we thank them both for their service and offer our condolences to their families. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Agenda is amended. Pardon? Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Now that we have amended the agenda, I would like a most, make, I'm offering a motion to reconsider Bill 588 so it can be taken under final action today.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on today's, the end of today's agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And we, next order of business is proclamations, and we have two to be presented by myself and one from Councilwoman Strasburger. Councilwoman Strasburger, we'll begin with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Would everyone, would Ms. Saunders and everyone here with Ms. Saunders kindly come up if you're able?
Cool. Thank you. No, great.
Can we get her a chair, please? Can we get her a chair?
We'll get a chair for you. Thank you.
Two cheers.
It's good to see you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you. One for her. One for the gentleman.
I'm sorry, Jane. Well, this is a very special occasion. I had the pleasure of meeting one of my Shadyside neighbors, Ms. Joyce Saunders, for the first time this weekend. And this week she turns 100 years old, so we're going to celebrate that with a proclamation. Whereas Joyce M. Saunders was born in July 20, 1922, and Ms. Saunders is a spirit-filled grand and great-grandmother and godmother to seven children and four adults who love her dearly. And whereas Ms. Saunders, Mrs. Saunders attended Morehead Elementary and graduated from Fifth Avenue High School, June 19, 1941. And whereas Mrs. Saunders served as a supervisor of the Dietary Department of Montefiore Hospital for 37 years before her retirement. And whereas Mrs. Saunders is a proud member of the AARP and St. James AME Church and an active member of Vintage Senior Center. Whereas Mrs. Saunders remains a devoted and loving wife and friendly Shadyside neighbor of 40 years to her husband, 97-year-old Howard M. S. Saunders. And whereas Mrs. Saunders is the church mother of the First Baptist in Finleyville, Pennsylvania. And whereas blessings and gratitude are always given in her presence. And whereas Mrs. Saunders shows love and shares good feelings to whoever she meets. Whereas when you say goodbye, she states, "No, see you later. God loves you, and I love you too." And now therefore let it be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby express its best wishes to Mrs. Joyce Saunders on the celebration of her 100th birthday. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare July 20, 2022 to be Joyce Saunders Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve in a second?
The move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I think she went to school with my dad. What do you mean? They don't have it anymore. You have to, you have to put her out.
Good morning to everyone. I appreciate everyone that is here, and I'm just so thankful to be able to get up this morning. Because there's a lot that would like to get up, can't get up. So we're blessed. So each day that you get up, you thank God, because it is a blessing. And I thank you all so very much for all your kindness.
Wish you a happy birthday. And I understand that you have family here, some of whom are from, in Pittsburgh, some of whom are here from out of town. Where do we have everyone from?
Well, my wife and I are from Virginia. We used to live in Stanton Heights for quite a period of time, and I was transferred in '99. So we live outside of Richmond, Virginia.
My wife and I were from Jeanette. I've been with Aunt Joyce for 60 years, by the way, over 20. Okay? My wife's from St. Kitts. That's 280 miles south of St. Thomas. We've been married 35 years, and we like to say God bless everybody who's with us.
I'm here from Springfield, Illinois. My dad was Uncle Joe's brother.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome back to Pittsburgh. It's great to have you, and congratulations. Let's get a photo, all right? Here, we have, if we have a proclamation. So we might have a.
Her dad went to school with Aunt Joyce.
Might have a classmate of Council President's father who also graduated from Fifth Avenue High School that same year.
And now I have one to be presented.
We always hear those comments. Thank you. And will Joe Orvich and family please come forward? We have one for Councilman O'Connor, but we're saving that to the end of the meeting. Okay. Is that who's calling? Somebody call, I don't know who it is they called, do me it again. Come up here. You can come up with me. Thank you. I just want to say, come on up, Orvich family. I just want to say, when I first met Joe Orvich, he was volunteering, of course, but he's been volunteering ever since, and that's been probably about almost 15 years, about 15, 20 years. And so he's done a lot for, for our community and across the city of Pittsburgh. He's quiet, but very strong in doing a lot for a lot of people. And I just want to, I think it's about time he took a, had a, received a proclamation, but he never won one, so here we are. We had to force him. Whereas volunteering one's time and resources has been and continues to be an elemental part of the essence of our city and is essential in its spirit and vitality, Joe Orvich is someone who exemplifies this quality. And whereas Joe is known to many as DJ Joe from the Pittsburgh DJ Company, he volunteers his services for multiple events each year, such as Big Brothers and Big Sisters Bowling for Kids' Sake events, and my Council President Theresa Kael Smith's annual District 2 Easter egg hunt, and many other events. Whereas he's even persuaded his wife Danielle to be the Easter Bunny. Thanks, Danielle. And whereas he has coordinated the Winter Wonderland and the Fourth of July events held at the West End Elliot Overlook for several years, and has been an active member of the Rotary International since August 2017, serving as social media coordinator and recently adding community service coordinator to his role. And where, and now you're president, and now President. We missed that on this pro. We'll put that in. And whereas Joe donates his time to the American Legion, the Open Door Youth Outreach Center, collected books and book bags and gifts for several school event, school drives, and helped a local, and helps local scene of workshops. This year, he was named one of Pittsburgh's 50 Finest by the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. And whereas Mr. Orvich is always willing to help residents who are in need of assistance, and he was a snow angel for four years, but did not limit his clients to those who registered for the program. He helped with this, with a shelter project, with a shelter project, which distributes food and clothing to folks experiencing homelessness on the north side. He even raised funds to rent a dumpster and collect, and coordinated the service and crews to clean out a resident of Elliot who was in need, her flooded basement out. And whereas Joe is a loving husband and wife, we'll ask Danielle about that, to Danielle, and a devoted father to his son Marco and daughter Sydney. Sydney's now working as an intern in our office, to whom he has instilled the volunteering spirit. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby thank Joe Orvich for his countless acts of service he has performed for the residents of the City of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, July 19, 2022 to be Joe Orvich Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Do you have a motion to approve in a second?
The move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Congratulations, finally. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, all I'd like to say is, I want to grow to be as humble as Ms. Saunders was. That's who I want to be. It's something I've worked on, and what an amazing lady, and, you know, honored to share this day with her. Although I don't live in Elliot anymore, my heart is always there. My heart is in the west side of Pittsburgh. My heart's too out this city, so hopefully, hopefully you'll be seeing more of me, you know, in the streets doing the work that I love to do, and if there's anything that I could be part of, please, you know, call on me.
I'm just going to say Joe was a member of the Ronin Motorcycle Club, too. That's not in the pro. Anybody else want to say a few words? Want to say a few words about your dad? Yeah.
I don't want to be put on the spot.
Let's put you on the spot, but say something nice about your dad.
So, hi, I'm Sydney. My father has been like a hard-working father for like years. Sorry about the cry. Over the years, I've seen my father, he's fallen, but I saw him get back up by the things, by my stepmom Danielle. Sorry. I couldn't be more proud of my dad for the man he became today. And I would say that I'm like kind of following in his footsteps, but at the same time, I'm really not. But I just look at my dad like, like, wow, like, maybe I can do something good, like my father.
Go ahead, I'm not here, too. We got to update a couple, listen, we missed a couple of kids on the.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll add them. Go ahead, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm also joined, we've, we've got a couple of my children, you know, we need to add. My stepdaughter, Deera. My son, Will, is in from Arizona. My grandson, Adam, is also here from Arizona, and my step-granddaughter, Kyla, also here from Arizona, so, yeah, that's it.
So I apologize that we missed this. We'll get them added. Can we take them back and get that added? But let's get a photo. Okay. Chris, can we get, yeah, can we get it up here? Where's your pro?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. Thank you for everything you do. And I have another one to be presented, but they're not here yet. We might do it at the end of the meeting. We're waiting to see for Councilman O'Connor. So we'll move on to the proclamations to be read into the record. Let's move on to this.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 617. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh congratulates Family House on the rip and cutting of their new facility and declares Thursday, July 28, Family House Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman, Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 621. Be it further resolved, I'm sorry, we read that one already. Councilmember Kraus presents Bill Number 622. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, July 22, 2022 to be Margaret Moore Stouffer Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilmember Wilson presents Bill Number 624. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declare Saturday, August 13, 2022, the day of Jay's birthday to be Jay Poliziani Day here in the City of Pittsburgh.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
The move.
Second. Any discussion? Councilwoman? Could you ask, so the public knows what we're doing?
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 619. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare July 19, 2022 to be Richard Ratner Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Now, can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Proclamations are approved, and we'll move Councilman O'Connor to the end of the meeting or whenever we get an opening here. Our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted, and threats. May we have the first registered speaker, and I have the first registered speaker, as Naomi Mullen.
Good morning, trees.
Good morning, Naomi.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Monair. Block busting and affliction of emotional distress has occurred against Monair. Those who own the property owners of Monair do so at their own peril. On June 20, 2022, the detrimental Monair school building worsened into being a disruptive and nuisance property. We have objected to apartments or anything other than a green space to replace the school. Tear it down. The building is a magnet to youth who broke into in addition to trespassing. Three of the seven youths had to be escorted out of the building. Tear it down. Other neighborhoods have been wired with worse. Do not allow it to happen to Monair. The outcry to the school board has proved futile. Put pressure on them. Sell it to the city for a dollar. Tear it down. Now that the Kenley Park is no longer in our district, we want the school to become green space as replacement. Open deals, not shady deals in Monair. The Monair State, the Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Monair. That is not advisable. Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham have all pledged to help Monair get rid of our detrimental school property and replace it with a green space. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space will be beneficial to all ages and stages of people. A beautiful, calming place to enjoy fruit trees, flowers, and herb. Will the rest of the City Council promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the Monair neighborhood? The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is a partial reparation for the injuries we have endured. Shady trees, not shady deals in Monair. Thank you. Have a good vacation.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Suver, Curry France, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for the Presidency 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Vote, by voter verification is key. Reporter for the National and Global Intelligence Information Networks, which I founded. A council concern is the relevance of intersectionalist theory and critical race theory to the evolution of Pittsburgh local, Pennsylvania State, and U.S. national law on human reproductive abortion rights. Counselors, sick. Quote, "Do you believe that men can get pregnant?" A question that intersectionalist, critical race theorist Dr. Kiara Bridges, Anthro PhD in JD UC Berkeley Law School, author CRT of Primer 2019, which the Carnegie Library and the Hill does not have, it should have, asked Senator Josh Hawley at a recent U.S. abortion hearing. Dr. KB thinks that yes, men can get pregnant, by which she means trans men, biologically, genetically, chromosomally XX sex females with uteruses who think that they have a masculine gender identity can get pregnant and may go for abortions. Mr. Ganey, not here in this room, but do you agree with your black African-American sister on this? Ms. Kael Smith? Strasburger? Ms. Gross? Do you? Mr. Wilson? Connor? Kraus? Coghill? Lavelle? Do you? Well, that means yes. That means this council agrees with this position. CRT comes from Marx's social structure critique of any capitalist system, which means that Marx and KGB, and believe that racial and sex gen materially grounded inequalities are embedded in any such system. So systemic racism and sexism, USA. And therefore equity is necessary in order to combat that, to take from rich capitalists and give to poor people. It's fundamentally, equity is fundamentally anti-capitalist and Marxist in its conception. That means Mr. Ganey and all these council members on this point are Marxist. I think that KG, that KB's position lacks rigor. It glabber that we should respect the choice of an individual who is over 18 to be a trans man or woman, but not to embed it in national or local legislation.
The next registered speaker is Amy Teresa Campetora. Amy, is she on that line? No. Not in the audience? No. Our next speaker is, registered speaker is Mira Parente. Parente, I pray so to name her.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the regulation of deceptive advertising by limited service pregnancy care centers. Recently, I met a young woman who left her appointment at Planned Parenthood after founding out, finding out that she was too far along for a chemical abortion. She didn't have enough money for a surgical abortion, and seeing her ultrasound, she knew she couldn't do an abortion. But then she never wanted an abortion, but like so many women, she felt she had no choice. I called CareNet, a national pregnancy care line, who helped me find a local pregnancy care center that was open that day. Anne and I went to the center in the city where she was offered options counseling in a caring environment. The staff there scheduled an ultrasound for the following week. A week later, Anne invited me to go with her for her ultrasound. The sonographer showed her her over 15-week-old baby safe in her womb. She confirmed that my new friend had a viable pregnancy, and because Anne decided after walking away from Planned Parenthood that she wanted to keep this baby, she was encouraged to choose a handmade baby blanket. Anne, her ex, and her six-year-old son were treated with love and encouragement. Another pregnancy and family service offered her help with rent money for a house for her and her three children, along with monthly parenting classes, baby supplies, and a gas card for work. Years ago, I took volunteer training at a pregnancy care center here in Pittsburgh. After hearing about all the help the center offered, I remember dropping my pen, I'm a voracious note taker, and thinking to myself, Planned Parenthood doesn't empower women. Pregnancy care centers empower women. A pregnancy care center performed an ultrasound for free. Planned Parenthood charged Anne $120, unrefundable even though she didn't have an abortion. The pregnancy care center offered Anne options. Planned Parenthood offered her abortion, and insisted she throw away the brochure about help available to her that she received on her way into Planned Parenthood. Pregnancy care centers help women in crisis slow down to think about all of their options. I repeatedly hear women say that they found nonjudgmental care at pregnancy care centers. And because of the practical help and resources pregnancy care centers supply, moms get to enjoy the gift of life that they never regret. I'm sorry if someone has deceived you about what pregnancy care centers do, and I hope you will see that they are a valuable resource for women in Pittsburgh and beyond. They deserve your support and your protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered, our next registered speaker is Mary Beddingfield. Good morning. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
Mary Beddingfield Homewood.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Many years ago, proponents of abortion referred to themselves as pro-choice. They even bristled at being called pro-abortion. And according to many of them, they stated that they believed it would be better to not need abortion, but that the option should be available for those who desire it. A choice among choices. A deadly choice among many choices for life. Well, finally, the mask is off. The recent attacks, both political and literal, against crisis pregnancy centers, against choices, is proof positive that pro-abortion was and is the accurate and correct label. Crisis pregnancy centers treat women as though they are intelligent individuals, able to actually receive information about all of the options available. to actually receive information about all of the options available to them, and then to take that information and make a decision. On the other hand, abortion advocates do not want a woman to know her choices. They treat women as though giving them real choices would just confuse their little feeble minds. Elizabeth Warren has just said as much. For decades, CPCs have provided information, support, tangible and emotional health at no cost to the recipient or taxpayers. They don't have anything to gain except the blessing of their life-inspiring endeavors and the smile of heaven. Abortion providers, however, have a monetary dog in that fight, much to gain in dollar signs. If you truly believe in choice, if you truly believe in womanhood, do not make it more difficult for a woman to receive help in a crisis, and do not continue to support the genocide of black babies that abortion has always been. And let me close with this. Much has been said lately about being on the right or wrong side of history. Of even more concern is being on the right side of his story.
Our next registered speaker is Scott Christopher Moore.
My name is Scott Moore, and I'm a resident of Bloomfield. I grew up in Squirrel Hill, attended Pitts Republic Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. I currently serve as president of the Board of Directors for the Women's Choice Network, an organization with three medical clinics in Oakland, the North Side, and Monroeville. After completing my MBA at Wharton in Philadelphia, I was debating whether to live in Pittsburgh or a different city, and my ability to serve the local community through Women's Choice was a key determining factor in moving back to our city. I want to use my time today to share about the services we provide and speak in opposition to ordinance 524. Our organization has charitably served Pittsburgh residents for over thirty-five years. These services include STD testing, ultrasounds, and maternal care free of charge. None of our services are fake. The Pennsylvania Department of Health receives STD results from us, and they count them as real STD results. We have a staff of licensed medical doctors, nurses, and RDMS sonographers. Many of our clients are underinsured or uninsured single mothers. We also meet with non-custodial fathers, offering counseling, mentorship, and career support. Clients walk away from our centers with ongoing assistance, countless diapers, clothing, cribs, and strollers. I grew up with our clients. I know our clients. They walk away with a lot of material assistance. And all of our services are free of charge, supported by a local donor community of more than 2,000 Pittsburgh residents. And the main way we receive clients is through referrals, not advertising. Pregnancy centers like ours should be free to serve women and offer the support they need without fear of unjust government punishment. Similar laws face legal challenge in other jurisdictions, as you likely know. Ordinances like 524 single out facilities like ours while not holding abortion providers to the same standards, simply because the portfolio of services we provide looks different. But it's all real. It's not fake. As fellow Pittsburgh residents, we must allow each other to speak freely, provide services, and care for Pittsburgh's families. We stand alongside dozens of pregnant women each month and help them prepare for motherhood. We receive several STD appointments from university students who don't trust the confidentiality of their on-campus testing options. And we hope you see how our services save the city and state countless thousands of dollars each year. I also hope you understand a bit more about the full scope of services we provide at Women's Choice Network. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Chad Ringblum?
It came to my attention that there will be three pro-abortion resolutions introduced at this city council meeting. Not since slavery has America given such a brazen effort to dehumanize a class of image bearers. Throughout world history, the same tired arguments and advocacy for these atrocities are always used. Quote, "That's not human. That's just a black man." Or, "That's not human. It's just a Jew." It's always the same, and because we're all made in God's image, no matter how corrupted by sin we may be, our consciences must be assuaged in order to continue with the evils in which we partake. The issue of abortion is no different. Speak to any person in favor of abortion rights, and they will say something to the tune of, "A fetus is not a human life. It's a potential human life." Or, "It's not a human. It's just a clump of cells." Of course, this is a fallacy. Scientifically and medically speaking, the facts are not on the side of those who argue in favor of abortion. Devoid of scientific fact, one has to resort to philosophical arguments in order to suppress that truth, the truth that a fetus or an embryo is in fact a human life. As Stephen Hawking once said, "Philosophy is dead." Human life is not valuable because it's wanted, or because it can walk, or think, or feel pain. Human life is valuable because rich or poor, royalty or peasant, black, white, brown, et cetera, every human being bears the very image of God himself and his moral law written on their hearts. The greatest truth being suppressed is that God has something to say regarding his image bearers. God is so pro-life that he requires a reckoning for the shedding of innocent blood, and that reckoning is life for life. He ordained governments and their representatives the authority to take life from one who takes innocent life. No one has authority unless it's granted to them. As city council, you've been granted a certain level of authority, and that authority doesn't derive from your city charter, your electorate, the state or federal constitution. That authority is given by the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords, Jesus Christ. You would be wise to take into consideration what exactly God has to say about what you're about to introduce, since ultimately, you will be answering to him regarding what you did with the authority you've been granted. When God spoke through the prophet Jeremiah regarding this subject, he said, quote, "Because the people have forsaken me and have profaned this place by making offerings in it to other gods whom neither they nor their fathers nor the kings of Judah have known, and because they have filled this place with the blood of innocence and have built the high places of Baal to burn their sons in the fire as burnt offerings to Baal, which I did not command or decree, nor did it come into my mind. Therefore, behold, days are coming, declares the Lord, when this place shall no more be called Topheth or the Valley of Son of Him but the Valley of Slaughter."
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. And our next speaker is Philip Yurk.
Hello. This is from God's Word.
Please state your name.
My name is Philip Yurk. I'm with.
And neighborhood for the record. Thank you.
Trafford, PA. Proverbs 24:11. Rescue those who are being taken away to death. Hold back those who are stumbling to the slaughter. If you say, behold, we do not know this, does not he who weighs the heart perceive it? Does not he who keeps watch over your soul know it? And will he not repay man according to his work? Crisis pregnancy centers are actually doing that. They're rescuing babies. They're providing services for women. Planned Parenthood and Allegheny Reproductive are murdering babies. Which side will you be on? I have a quick story about my own life. My mom gave birth to my sister at sixteen and me at seventeen. She didn't choose to murder me. And none of y'all sitting in here, none of y'all mothers murdered you. You're breathing air. Because God decreed it, and he kept you alive through Jesus Christ and grace through you to you by your mom not making that choice. But anyway, she could have made that choice. I wouldn't be standing here. My sister wouldn't be standing there, and then that six grandkids that wouldn't be here as well. And that's happened sixty-three million times in this country. We're wiping out whole generations of image bearers of God. These babies are knit together in their mother's womb. By, and the Bible says, "All things were made through Christ and for Christ." We cannot continue to slaughter them, and if you're for it, you're against God. So the call is to repent and believe in the gospel, and there's forgiveness and righteousness found in Christ. God sent his son, who was born of a virgin. He never sinned. He lived a perfect life that God demands us to live. God hates sin and must punish it. He sent his son to take the punishment for our sin, including baby murder. He also didn't stay dead after he died in our place and absorbed the wrath that we deserved. He raised from the dead. Now he's seated at the right hand of the Father as king. He's your king and my king, whether you want to make that legitimate or not, he is. And we all will have to stand before him. Now you either bow the knee now and make your law according to his law, or you will be held accountable in the next life. You got to stand before him. We all do. And why wouldn't you want to obey the God who keeps you alive? One more thing. Take a breath. You borrowed that from Jesus Christ. He sustains you right now. Please stop supporting baby murder. It's evil. It's not a choice. It's evil. It's genocide, and it's a billion-dollar enterprise. I pray that God will grant you repentance, and you would not thwart the processes of women getting help at these pregnancy centers, because you'll be standing in opposition to God. Support them. Don't regulate, put extra regulations on them. I pray you repent, in Jesus' name.
Our next registered speaker is Janice Collins. Janice Collins.
My name is Janice Collins, and I'm from Penn Hills. I want to talk about the deception that the pregnancy centers are deceptive, because the whole premise of that is deceptive. I stand before you as a post-abortive woman. I aborted, much to my shame, much to my horror, much to my pain, two children. And I often wonder, what would they be doing now? I killed my babies. Thanks to God and friends, I've healed from the traumatic events. What people don't tell you after the abortion, that's not the end of it. The horror, the nightmares, the hearing a baby cry, that's not there, because your baby is a part of your soul. When it's ripped from your womb, there's a hole in there. I so appreciate the fact that Ms. Saunders was able to celebrate a hundred years of life. My children will never celebrate that because they're dead. The pregnancy centers do exactly what they say they're going to do. They help you. They nourish you. They make you, help you make the decision that your baby is alive. Now, the abortion clinic that I went to told me my baby was a clump of tissue, only for me to find out later that seven days after conception, a baby starts to be born. So a baby's a baby in a womb, and the womb should be the safest place for a baby in this country, but it's not. The only way that the womb is taken away and the baby's taken away out of the womb is because we are convinced by Planned Parenthood that our life would be easier. You can't afford to have this baby right now. There's a better life for you. Where in turn, the pregnancy centers tell you, "We'll help you. We'll come alongside you. Keep your baby." I have three live children now. One's a PhD, one's a criminology major, and another one is a marketing ad exec. My children are doing well. I have grandchildren because I chose life after choosing the death of my babies. Now, I know I'll see my dead babies in heaven again. That's the only solace I have as a mother and a woman standing before you today. Abortion is murder, and here's an idea. If we want to stop the violence in the street, start, stop condoning murder in the womb. The law reciprocity stands whether you believe in God or not. You will reap what you sow. Our children are being gunned down in schools. Why? We're allowed, we have released a spirit of murder in this country, because we're saying it's okay to murder the babies in the womb. So what's happening? Our kids outside the womb are getting murdered. We think it's going to take a law. It takes a change apart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your time's expired. Tiffany Gilbert?
Good morning, counsel. It's good to be here again. I stated, my name is Tiffany Gilbert, and my husband and I own a pregnancy center in East Liberty. Along with that, we pastor a church in Mount Washington. Thank you for taking the time in advance for hearing me. So I stated last week, as it relates to deceptive advertising, I am reiterating the fact that the term deceptive advertising is vague at best. Again, there are many laws already in place to restrict deceptive advertising. Thus, we are not breaking any laws. This type of regulation could in fact be deemed as discriminatory, in that it would be applied to facilities that provide services for pregnant women and do not perform, refer, rather, for abortions. As mentioned last week, our center and centers alike provide free services to thousands of local families, single moms, and children, ultimately leading to a more complete and whole family unit. My question to you this morning is this. Is it truly in the city's best interest to attempt to place unrealistic and unjust regulations, as well as potential sanctions on these centers who are pouring back in the community? Centers that are literally breathing life back into the community? Centers whose primary focus is to educate and support? Centers who have fed thousands and support? Centers who have fed, centers who have, who are saving the city of Pittsburgh thousands in monetary value? Centers who help broken people become whole? Centers who have helped countless families experience restoration, along with free clothing, as mentioned prior? Baby items, free education, free counseling, free pregnancy tests, and so much more? How are these services harmful or threatening to anyone, especially women seeking an abortion? Is it truly in the city's best interest? My answer, absolutely not. Why would you seek to deny services to the women who want to consider the alternatives before making a final and absolute decision? Bottom line, we are a vital asset to the city of Pittsburgh, and there is factual data, facts, to prove so. Pregnancy centers should be free to serve women and offer the support they need without fear of unjust government punishments. I would ask that the deceptive advertising portion of the bill be completely removed. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is, is Jay Gilbert? He's not here, correct? Okay. Thank you. And our next speaker is Aaron Pratt. Aaron Pratt. Is Aaron Pratt online?
Yes, I am online.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Please continue.
Good morning, and thank you for this time. I am standing in opposition to ordinance 522, 23, and 24, Title VI, Chapter 620, 603, and 607. The definition of abortion in each of those documents says that abortion being to the use of any means to terminate the clinically diagnosful pregnancy of a woman with knowledge that termination by those means will, with reasonable likelihood, cause the death of the unborn child. So what we see here is, number one, thank goodness that Pittsburgh knows what a woman is, but number two, they admit that it is a child that is in the womb of that mother. To terminate that pregnancy is murder. Exodus, Chapter 20, verse 13, says, "Thou shalt not murder." That is a command from the Holy God. We who stand in Christ, we stand with him. We are to deliver those who are being taken away to death and those who are staggering and slaughtered. It says, "Oh, hold them back." You, who sit as city officials, are supposed to stand and protect that life. You are supposed to be a minister of God for good, an avenger who brings wrath on those who practice evil, yet you let those who murder babies in this city slide with a path. You say in your title that from January of 2023 through December of 2020, that 3,000 babies were murdered in Pittsburgh, and you want to let that slide. What you are doing is the opposite, and God's wrath abides on you because you are not doing what he has put you in place to do. Abortion is murder, and those who enable it, celebrate it, and especially perform it. What you are doing is the opposite, and God's wrath abides on you, because you are not doing what He has put you in place to do. Abortion is murder, and those who enable it, celebrate it, and especially perform it are under God's wrath, and it is a wrath that can only find replete through the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ alone, and I urge you today to repent and believe in the gospel of Jesus Christ. That is the only way that you can escape His judgment. This city is under God's judgment. This state is under God's judgment. This nation is under God's judgment, because people fail to stand for the innocent babies who are in the womb of their mothers, where they should be the most protected, and they are not. Yet you celebrate their murder, and you want to protect those who come from out of state to murder their children. You want to protect the abortionist who murders the children, yet you have no regard for the babies that are in the womb of their mothers, and you stand under the wrath of God. The blood that is spilled out from every child that is murdered is on your hands. You will give an answer to Almighty God for every single baby.
Next registered speaker is Taylor Rapchak. Taylor? Taylor online? Muted. Please unmute yourself, Taylor. Taylor, please unmute yourself. One more time. Taylor, please unmute yourself so you can speak. Go on to the next speaker, Eli. I'm not sure if it's L or I. L R I Z Z, Z A R R Y. Is that an L? Do you have an L? Yeah, okay. I couldn't tell if it was an L or an I on my paper.
Good morning.
Good morning, Eli.
I...
Please state your name and...
My name is Eli Rosari, and I'm from Irwin. And this morning, I'd like to thank all of you for all the hard work that you do, the decisions that come across your desk, the difficult decisions you have to make on a daily basis. I want you to understand that I, I have no animosity against any, any of you, and, and you know, I, I believe the Lord loves each of you as much as I feel He loves me. And I, I believe that, you know, the decisions you have to make, I, I, I'm not going to convince you one way or the other. I'm not going to say anything that is going to make you stand up and say, wow, that's, that's the first time I heard anything like that. But I, I believe that we, we all have the capacity to hear from God. And I'm not God. I'm, so I'm not going to tell you what to do and what not to do, but what I'd like for all of you to do today is just to take a minute and just ask God, what is it that you want? If you're real, if you're there, speak to me and tell me what it is that you want, because I believe God will answer that prayer. And, and He has answered in so many lives, and He's answered it in my life. And, and the thing is that we, we, we go on thinking that, well, politicians have the answer, the government has the answer, this organization has the answer, and the fact is that none of us have the answer. It, the, the real answers that we seek, the truth, the truth that we seek is not written on some piece of paper, but it is a real person. It is the person of Jesus Christ. He says, I am the truth, the life, and the way. And if we just stop for a moment and stop listening to all the voices, to all the different opinions, and just say, Lord, what is it? What's the truth in this situation? And what would you have me do? What, how would you have me vote? And I, I believe with all my heart that He will answer you. So take some time today. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, but take some time today and ask the Lord, what do you want from me? Thank you.
Thank you. And that exhausted list of registered speakers, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Come on, one of you come to the podium.
I was going to be, speak about the knotweed. I'll try to get back to that, but all I can say is thank God for separation of church and state.
State your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Bernadette, and I live in Beachview, and thank goodness for the separation of church and state. Um, I am a survivor, didn't want to speak about this. I'm a survivor of St. Philip's child sex trafficking in the sixties and the seventies, and the God that I pray to would not force a child to birth a child. Anyway, knotweed. Coming up, Wensel to Broadway. I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago about knotweed slapping me in the face when I go up the sidewalk. Anthony, it's a mudslide. I brought up scissors to cut my way through. There's a mudslide and a really big boulder that's about to come down with a house above it. It's like that little ramp from Wensel up. Thank you, Anthony Coghill, for doing so much and listening to Beachview. He's trying his best. I'm pretty sure that the tree planting is not going to go forth. We need pedestrian crosslights at the top of Coasts and on top of Boasted. One of the trees the city planted a long time ago is blocking the little pedestrian sign. People, they don't stop. This sign, they're not going to see the signs at the angle of the way the roads are and the bends until it's too late. So I don't know if we can find the money for that, but it's something simple. It's just when a person needs to cross, they press it, and there's lights that nobody can pretend they didn't see. Thank you. And remember, separation of, of church and state, and nobody has the right to force their god down anybody's throat or uterus.
Is there anyone else wishing to address City Council?
How's everybody doing? My name is Paul Harrison from the Hill District. First, I want to start off with the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. And I want to go to John six, three, six, verse three, sixteenth chapter. For God so loved the world, that He gave His only begotten Son, that whosoever believeth in Him will have everlasting life, and shall not perish. Okay? Now here we go to the Tree of Life. It's Squirrel Hill Synagogue. All churches, all mosques are under Christ. For one thousand years Christ will reign. There is no separation of church and state. This book here, you swear on this, you swearing on me. Don't play with my name, because everyone will go. Okay? Where are we at here? Okay? All sins were paid for through my blood. It took the shedding of blood for redemption of sins. Real blood, real murder, real death. Now you see me talking, I came here three years ago. Heaven goes on every day. And any man that goes to heaven, his works will follow him, daily, like we doing right here. All right, Dune Ronomy, verse thirty-two, chapter thirty-nine. See now that I, see now that I even am He, and there is no God with me. I kill and I make alive. I wound and I heal. Neither there any that could deliver out of my hand. And that Fern Hollow Bridge collapsed, that was my miracle. No loss of life. Like all these shootings is happening, till all things are written or fulfilled, they will not stop. Forty years, or four hundred years. Christ is the grand subject, our good, the design, and the glory of God. It's in, it should fill the memory, rule the heart, and guide the feet. Read it slowly, frequently, and prayerfully. It's a mine of wealth, a paradise of glory, a river of pleasure. It is given you in life and will be opened at the judgment, and will be remembered forever. It involves the highest responsibility and will reward the greatest labor, and will condemn all who trifle with His sacred contents.
Thank you. Your name is, your time's expired. Next speaker, please.
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Today, I wanted to say thank you to the mayor. Mayor Ganey had made some kind of arrangement the last time I came to a meeting, that if I went over in his office at eleven, that Fitzgerald was going to be there. But it happened that I sat here so long, and then when, once I spoke, I really forgot about it. But the mayor did reach out. Now you, you heard me make some statements about, about him. Like I said, um, there's sometimes I'm unsure about him, but I'm gonna tell you, it's like the young fellow came and told me, Ms. Brown, you respected me, or you was pointing at him. But I'm thinking, who is he? We are the citizens. He's supposed to be under us, not above him above us. If I can point my finger at the President of the United States, I think I can point my president, my finger at Mr. Uh, Ganey. Another thing, you instinct that it's just me, but the people are watching, watching what you're doing. I was walking through the community, and the one lady stopped me, and she said, did you know Mayor Ganey was out there in Homewood? I said, no. She says, and everybody was wondering, did he speak? No, he just stood around, they said, just stood around looking. But she was mad, and she said, the whole community is talking about, but he's talking about South Side. Every time on the radio, we hear the snippet, South Side this, they didn't want to meet these for South Side. But you coming to the blackneck community, you can't even speak to us, can't even say some words of encouragement, if nothing else, encourage us, that I am your new mayor, I'm going to work for you, but to stand around in the neighborhood where the black people are and can't say a word, but you can be all on the radio and on TV, South Side, South Side. What about the North Side? What about the Hill District? I live in the Hill District, and, and we have been underserved and continue to be underserved. And you know, Mr. Lavelle, I say because of you, Wheatley, Ganey, all of them, we have, they have, that's the North Side, I mean, the Hill District is just like we're stepchildren. If we, if I come down here, what is she coming down here for? Because you don't know what you don't know. If I come down here, there's a reason. I'm not just coming down here just to speak to you, because I really, every time I'm coming, all these years, twenty-two years, and the way you're treating me, I'm getting anxiety when I come in this room. And I look today. Today is the last day of this session. Tomorrow is my birthday. God knows I didn't want to come down here on my birthday. Thank God that you don't have the meeting tomorrow. And I want you to still remember what I'm saying. Oh, you spoke about Ms. Gar, Ms. Saunders? I went out in the hallway and I spoke to her. Ms. Saunders used to work with my sister-in-law, Lady, what's she called? Her name was Claire Lee Brown. She's the one that worked in the, the, um, she worked with Ms. Saunders. Ms. Saunders, remember, she has a nice...
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we are going to move on to our proclamation for Councilman O'Connor, and then our presentation of papers, but let's do our proclamation first. And I want to welcome Ms. Con, Ms. Judy O'Connor. It's good to have you back in chambers, Ms. O'Connor, Mrs. O'Connor. Hey, and that's Abby, right?
Molly.
Molly. Thought it was Abby. Sorry. I want to roast them so bad, but, but I thought, let me do something to honor them today, and then we get in the back, I'll roast them. I'm going to start the proclamation. And whereas Corey O'Connor has served the neighborhoods of Squirrel Hill South, Regent Square, Swiss Elm Park, Greenfield, Hazelwood, Glen Hazel, Hayes, Lincoln Place, and New Homestead since 2012, when he was elected to represent Pittsburgh City Council, District Five. And whereas during his tenure on City Council, Mr. O'Connor has had many legislative accomplishments, including, but not limited to, establishing the city's first HIV/AIDS Commission, creating regulations to incorporate medical marijuana zoning in the city of Pittsburgh, and passing the Paid Sick Days Act, which is the first in the state. And whereas, most recently, after the Tree of Life synagogue shooting in his district, Mr. O'Connor co-sponsored legislation to ban assault weapons in public places, and, and after the Fern Hollow Bridge collapse, Mr. O'Connor joined with Mayor Ganey and council members to create legislation forming a commission to advise officials on best practices to improve and maintain Pittsburgh's infrastructure. And whereas, like his father, the late Mayor Bob O'Connor, Corey is a strong advocate for community service, and was twice honored as Squirrel Hill Little League Baseball Coach of the Year, and was the youngest varsity sports coach in WPIAL history. He continues to coach the Central Catholic High School golf team, and also serves on local, on, on several local boards and commissions, including the Children's Home and Lemieux Family Center. And whereas, his mother Judy O'Connor and the O'Connor family continues to honor the memory of his father through charitable acts of the Bob O'Connor Foundation, such as the famous Cookie Cruise and the St. Patrick's Day parade, party. And whereas, on July twen, July tenth, twenty twenty-two, Mr. O'Connor resigned as a member of City Council and was sworn in as County Controller for Allegheny County on Sunday, July tenth, during a private ceremony. Corey resides in Swiss Elm Park with his wife Katie and their daughter Molly, otherwise known as Abby. He looks forward to helping not only the residents of Council District Five, but all the residents of Allegheny County. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and thank Corey O'Connor for his dedicated service to the city of Pittsburgh and to the residents of Council District Five, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, to be Corey O'Connor Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. And Councilman O'Connor, we also have something, will all members come up, we also have something for Councilman O'Connor. And I want to thank Madam Clerk for doing all the shopping.
I get to give some comments? I didn't know if I had enough votes. So obviously, thank you, Council President, for doing this. Spent, you know, bringing my mom down here, she has a lot of good memories, and with her health being a little rough right now, was, it was good to get her down here, and Molly, and my wife Katie. I guess I was just reflecting that I've been in this office or down these halls for thirty-one years. My dad started on council when I was six. So I've had a, a great time with a lot of staffers, with the clerk's office for many years, with Sergeant-at-Arms that we've worked with over the years, colleagues, I guess I can do one-on-ones here. I know there's a couple that are out. Reverend, I would say, he and I were the only two from Central Catholic, so we formed our own committee together. But he was very helpful when I first got here in learning the process, learning how to get to five votes, and getting a lot accomplished through our offices. I guess I can start with my seating partner, Mr. Lavelle, who we, we probably have some comments. We're probably lucky that the mics weren't as hot as they were maybe five or six years ago. We had a great time sitting together, and Daniel was really great in getting a lot accomplished. And I think he and I don't say as much, but behind the scenes, we're able to get a lot of amendments done and things, things done for us. Coghill, I will say, I did take him golfing once, and that was enough. Coghill, I will say, I did take him golfing once, and that was enough. Anthony has been a good friend over the years and is now my golf partner, I guess, when we, when we have time to golf, and is a, is a true fighter from, you know, the South Hills, and I guess brings the Pittsburghese back to council, which I think we missed for a long time. Bobby, just being here for a couple of years, got to serve with you. I still remember our first meeting in Oakland, talking about what you were passionate about, and obviously, you're very progressive in a lot of legislation, and.
Too progressive.
Wow, I support a lot of it. So you did, you're doing well, and you're, you know, you're on your way to being a good council member for the North Side and the surrounding areas. I think probably the council member who we had, and we were just talking about this over the phone, one of her first bills was the land bank. And I remember Deb and I were sitting with then-Mayor Paduto, talking to a group that wanted to bring solar lights to Pittsburgh. And this shows the character that Deb had. We were being, I guess, opposed in a certain area about our bill and not making amendments. So Deb had this crazy idea, well, let's just drive to the meeting, and we'll show up, and we'll tell everybody our side. And we did that, and it was an accomplishment because Deb had high heels on, and she must have ran five or six miles, or five or six big city blocks to get there. But, you know, she was very supportive of that bill and other bills that, that she really has endorsed over the years. I think Erica and I probably, if you want to go for council members that had probably the most emotional, I want to say, six months to our neighborhoods, are still having that emotional grief, when we were working together on the Tree of Life situation, going to neighborhood meetings, fighting for gun control. It's a different type of relationship because it was just, our hearts were into that, and the passion that Erica had for those bills and for the community really came out, and I think that made us obviously a lot closer than we were even when you were a Chief of Staff for Councilman Gilman. I know he was here, but had to leave, and that was my fault, that we thought we'd do this towards the end of the meeting. I would say to our former council president, I see him on there, you know, Bruce, you're a good friend, we have a lot of good times, too many good stories that I can tell publicly, but you did officiate my wedding, and with that, we now have Molly here with us.
I didn't want that, of course.
But, but Bruce has been a very good friend, way too many lunches at Nikki's, and too many stories to tell, but I really appreciate all the support that I got from you. And that leaves us with our council president, who, when I left, I said, I didn't, didn't want to do this, but she said, you have to do this. So, you know, I think Teresa, you know, brings a family feel to council chambers, and a lot of people, you know, see us in our daily lives, but the, the support that she's given counsel, going to everybody's office, having snacks for everybody, always thinking about staff and doing holiday parties and things like that goes a long way because we are a family. It's a select family in the city of Pittsburgh. There are nine of us out of hundreds of thousands of people, and nobody will ever understand this position like my colleagues do right here. And it's, it's a different type of body. We get together, we're all in the same party, but we have differences of how we're going to get there. And I think we've accomplished a lot in my time here, and I know, I'm confident that my colleagues will continue to put the residents and the city first when they accomplish even more in the future. And I will say, you know, cleaning out the office was hard. You don't think about it, but, you know, it's a different step and a different journey, but I will miss my colleagues a lot, just the daily routine that we, you know, got, got into down here, and the events that we would all go to, and the jokes, and the proclamations, and the, of course, public comment. But I will miss it, and I'm not that far away. I found out where to, to sit in my new office. I did find out, though, I mean, parking in the city is terrible. Oh, my goodness, geez. Finally figured out where to park. But I want to just thank everybody. This has been a great experience. I want to thank the residents of District Five, who I'm still getting calls about potholes. But this is something that, you know, when you're a kid, you see other people do it, and you never think that you're going to be able to do it. And we just put, my family, myself, we always put the people of Pittsburgh first, and that's how we, you know, got here and hopefully do more good things over at the building across the street. So thank you very much for this. I really wasn't expecting to do this, but thank you very much, Teresa, for getting me down here today. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, here's your proclamation.
Okay, wow.
And then, you know, we thought we want you to come back, but we don't want you to use a key too often, so we're giving you a key to the city.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Yeah. And I want to, I want to thank Madam Clerk for shopping. We also got gifts for your staff, because we appreciate all that they've done as well. They've dedicated a lot of time here. Ms. O'Connor, Mrs. O'Connor, thank you for allowing your family to spend so much time giving back to the city of Pittsburgh. You've given a lot of time up with them over the years, so thank you very much. And thank you very much for, Katie, for giving up time with your husband. And now hopefully at the county level, we'll be getting the seat ready here for Abby, okay? But I just want to thank you for all your service. And do the members want to all say something, please?
I'll just take.
I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna sit here.
Trust me, we don't have enough time for a roast, I will tell you. You know, it would take me about two days to roast a guy, but, but, you know, I really wanted to say thank, welcome back, Mrs. O'Connor. If, if, in case you don't remember, I'm the only council person that made the Cookie Cruise boat turn around and bring me back to shore. I still have that dubious distinction, do I? No, yes, right, right. And Katie, welcome. I promise not to try to run up the bill, the tab at the, at the club next time, all right? I know I'm guilty of that in some fashion or manner. And Molly, I don't know where you got the nickname Abby, but you always were Molly to me, Molly. So, no, no, I just really wanted to say, you know, even though Corey's about twenty years younger than me, I think, he's been like a big brother to me, coming into council. I had known him before. I campaigned with his father, whom I dearly loved, you know, and looked to your advice through many things, and I appreciate you talking to me through many of those things, you know. And when, first thing, when I found out you were appointed as a county controller, I thought, what does that mean to my golf game?
It's going down.
My golf game stinks, so I'm not real worried about that. So, so now, Corey, I know you're gonna do a great job there. I just wanted to thank you for your years of service, and thank you for mentoring me as well, so appreciate it.
Councilman. Say something.
Yes, it was. Given that in the past, Corey and I have actually sat in our seats and joked about people going on too long in these certain situations, I'll actually be brief and just say, it's been a pleasure to serve with you over the years. As the proclamation read, as you stated, we got some very important work done, but what I've always appreciated about you was, we were able to always to do it in a very even keel manner and keep it civil. We could always have very forthright discussions with one another and be frank about where we stood, and always be willing to joke at the end of it, and I really appreciate that over the years. So thank you for all that you've done here, and I know you're going to do great things at the county.
Thank you. Next, for you.
So, one of the things I appreciate most about Corey is that when we have those marathon meetings that go on for, you know, three-plus hours, and it's usually around budget time or at the end of the year, Corey always is the comic relief and is always helping us move along the meetings so that we're able to get our days back and get some other work done. But to his point before about, you know, the, the bond that we kind of grew in the aftermath of the Tree of Life shooting, I was only on council for six months at that point, and I was pretty new and didn't know any of the media. And I just remember every time that there was an opportunity to, to come together when we saw each other, and the days after, when, you know, there were just so many media out in, on the street, he would always bring me in and kind of, he just stayed by my side, and I stayed by his, by his side, and he was such a moral support for me during that time. And in the months after, just really, we'll never forget how much of a support that he was, and how much he cared and showed that he cared about, about his community. So that's one thing that I know I always carry with me, and I know that you're just going to do amazing things at the county, so congratulations.
All right, so we're supposed to call you Controller?
No, Corey.
Corey. All right. So it's, you know, it was short-lived, and if I had known that you started a committee with someone you went to high school with, we could have done one from middle school since we, we shared a little bit, we shared a little bit of time at Frick ISA, and we could have, like, upped your city cred a little bit. So I appreciate, you know, the work that we've done together, always easy to work with, especially with certain amendments, you know, if I call you, we could talk it out. So I appreciate your support, even on current bills. And bills that you had, you know, I'm happy to lend support, you know, and also, it's just been, I guess I want to say, you know, between, you know, an effective staff, an effective council member, it's just, you know, it's been a pledge of the past, what is it, a couple of years? You know, I mean, I wish you would have turned your camera on a couple more times than you did, but.
No, I'm good.
But, but no, it's, it's, you know, it was definitely an awkward time that we spent together since we had the COVID, but that's kind of the story of how it began for me. But I really, you know, wish you all the best moving forward and serving all the people of Allegheny County.
Thank you, and I just, well, also keep it brief. Councilman, that was, that was a tremendous memory that night, where we literally ran across the downtown to get to our cars, to go to a community event, to speak to the community members during a question-answer session about the land bank legislation. But also, I just wanted to acknowledge what many other members have said, that the public may not realize how much time we all spend together, right? So forty-nine weeks a year, we spend many, many hours in this room, almost every Tuesday and almost every Wednesday of our lives. So I always say, you know, you may have an impression of other bodies of government and, and how they deliberate, or how they come to, to their votes, but we're kind of like a, just, it's like a holiday dinner, like a dysfunctional family dinner, twice a week, every week of our lives. But then we have to move on, so we don't always agree with each other, right? But there are so many different things that we, that we work on every week of our lives that we just kind of didn't, you know, learn how to let it go and move on to the next discussion for the next item. But I was grateful for Councilman O'Connor's support on many of the bills, and I was happy to support many of his policy efforts as well. So best of luck to you, Controller O'Connor. We're all gonna have to practice that. It doesn't, we're not used to saying it.
Yeah, call me.
Mrs. O'Connor, thank you. It was lovely to see you again, and Katie and Molly, it was lovely standing here with you today. Good to see you both. Thank you.
Sorry.
You matched today, too, by the way.
I know, we matched. So there, there is one thing that somebody has to take my spot with Deb. Her son usually races me down the hall, so I don't know who's got any speed on council now that I'm gone, but that was one that I enjoyed doing that. Oh, Coghill will take it.
Come on, we're dead in the water. I'll put my money on Erica.
Madam President.
And then I, I know the one that's going to take the longest, because you have the longest relationship with Councilman Kraus.
No, it's, it's gonna be short and sweet. Corey knows I love No End, and he's.
Enough about me, short and sweet, now talk about Councilman O'Connor.
But beyond being a really good friend to me over the years, and Katie knows this well, he's been my work husband for the last ten years now, and I don't know who's gonna be able to replace that. But we'll, we'll find a way to get through. And Corey, I don't know who's doing your scheduling now, but I'll have someone from the office reach out to you to come over to take you to lunch for a fish sandwich.
Sounds like a plan. Oh, wait, sorry. No, I'll tell it later.
Go ahead, tell it, tell it, tell it.
So wait, wait, Bruce, can I tell the, were you proposed to me story quickly? Quickly, quickly. We have to, I have to take mom back home and the baby to school. So we were at a rally when gay marriage was legalized in Pennsylvania, or no, in the country, sorry, sorry. So we are standing there, and we're on the news, and Bruce, I think Dan spoke, then Bruce speaks, and then they hand me the mic, and all of a sudden, somebody grabs my left arm, and I look to my left, and Bruce is on one knee in front of everybody proposing to marry me, in front of everyone. And I got a call, was on the eleven o'clock news that night, and I got a call from my aunt saying, do you have something you want to tell us? And I said, oh, no, not at this time, but yeah, so I want to thank you, Bruce, for putting me on the spot a few times, yes.
There is a few details that I've got of her.
Your mother said that explains a lot, a lot now, and Katie was wishing you took him up on it. Do you want to take a photo, everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mrs. O'Connor, it's an honor to always have you in here. Thank you for being here. Katie, you have your hands full. You want to get one with all the staff, too? Get one with all the staff. Do I want to get in? Come down to public comment. If you have stories.
Public comment. Take a walk right there.
Ash. Want to get in? Chris, I want to take the picture for you. I want to take it for you, so you can get in.
I can't do the selfie thing here. All right.
You want to get in?
I'll get a selfie anyway.
All right, here we go. One, two, three.
And now we'll move on to our presentation of papers. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You have, you have some, I think you have some.
It just says presentation.
Yeah.
So do I still call them? I still call them, though. Okay. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess, no new papers.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Public Safety, no new papers. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have four communications.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 614, Communication from Brenda Pre, the City Clerk, submitting the writ of elections for the vacancy of Council District Five to the Allegheny County Board of Elections. Bill Number 615, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, submitting a fiscal audit three taxing bodies service trust fund and escrow account dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Bill Number 616, Communication from John H. Patterson, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Community Television Corporation, submitting PCTV's twenty twenty-one annual report. Bill Number 620, Communication from Lee Schmidt, Director of the Department of Public Safety, submitting a request for approval of the preliminary list of guarantees of Stop the Violence Trust Fund community investment grants dated June fourteenth of twenty twenty-two.
Motion to re-perceive file all bills, please.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk, that Bill 620, the one for the guarantees for the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, why is, why is that a communication? why is, why is that a communication? You don't know why? Because it's a trust fund? I know, but it's... I'm sorry, one second, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Anything else, anything for members on that? Okay. Did we vote, did we vote on that? Okay, come here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. And then now we'll move on to Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 607. Report of the Committee on Law, Finance, and Law for July thirteenth with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 437. Resolution adopting the reapportionment plan for the city council districts in the city of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 518. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant payable, payable to Petrogallo Gordon Alfano Bostic and Raspenty LLC for legal services in connection with civil rights litigation for an amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. Bill Number 522. Ordinance amending Title VI Conduct Article One Regulated Rights and Actions by creating a new Chapter six twenty, protection of reproductive health care services providers for out-of-state investigation or prosecution for providing legal abortion care. Bill Number 523. Ordinance amending Title VI Conduct Article One Regulated Rights and Actions by creating a new Chapter six oh three. Enforcement limitations regarding bans of certain reproductive health care services. Bill Number 524. Ordinance amending Title VI Conduct Article One Regulated Rights and Actions by creating a new Chapter six oh seven. Regulation of deceptive advertising by limited services pregnancy centers. Bill Number 555. Resolution amending Resolution five seventy-nine, which authorize in agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the completion of projects approved in the city's American Rescue Plan by updating the approved projects to align with the revised plan. Bill Number 556. Resolution amending Resolution four fifty-three with appropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A. Bill Number 557. Resolution amending Resolution five eighty, which authorize in agreement with the URA for the completion of projects approved in the city's American Rescue Plan by updating the projects and by adjusting the not-to-exceed amount to align with the revised plan. Bill Number 558. Resolution for the amending Resolution number eight eighty-six entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty Two Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty Two CDBG Program and the Twenty Twenty Two through Twenty Twenty Seven Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by six hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-four cent, and increasing facility improvements, public safety by six hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cent." Bill Number 559. Resolution further amending Resolution number eight eighty-six entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty Two Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty Two CDBG Program and the Twenty Twenty Two through Twenty Twenty Seven Capital Improvement Program by adjusting various line items funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development." Bill Number 560. Resolution providing for the creation of the Bridge Asset Management Program Trust Fund and for setting the conditions for the deposit of funding into the account and for the expenditure of said funds. Bill Number 561. Resolution providing for the sale of certain property acquired by the city at the tax sale, Items A, twenty-one oh eight Mazette Place. Bill Number 563. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with MAS Financial Advisory Services LLC and Davenport and Company LLC for the purpose of providing municipal advisory services to the city over a three-year period with an option for two additional years. Bill Number 564. Resolution authorizing an interdepartmental transfer in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the bureaus of administration and animal care and control in the Department of Public Safety to the Bureau of Police. This transfer is necessary to assess the Bureau of Police with unanticipated funding needs for the imaging project that needs to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-two. Bill Number 586. Resolution authorizing the mayor to receive grant funding and technical assistance from Cities for Financial Empowerment Funds, Inc. for the Twenty Twenty Two cohort of the financial empowerment cities intended to create an Office of Financial Empowerment in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose. Bill Number 587. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the deputy chief of the staff to receive grant funding from the highest endowment to hire an education coordinator for twenty-four months in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose. Bill Number 589. Resolution providing for the mayor and director of the Department of Finance and/or the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease, sublease, or subleases for approximately eight thousand square feet from the lessor, the housing authorities of the city, for the purpose of providing office space of four employees of the Department of Planning and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections located within the city's first ward at one hundred Ross Street, effective on or about September one, twenty twenty-two, for a one-year period with an option to extend, providing for the payment thereof. Bill Number 594. Resolution providing for an agreement with North Side Christian Health Center in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand two hundred twenty dollars and fifty-four cent as part of the twenty nineteen City Council Public Service Grant Program. Bill Number 595. Resolution authorizing and directing the Pittsburgh City Controller to perform an audit of the city of Pittsburgh and related intergovernmental authorities' compliance with the service worker prevailing wage ordinance. Bill Number 605. Resolution further amending Resolution number ninety-three entitled, "Providing for an agreement or use of existing agreements and/or contracts for the purchase of materials, supplies, equipment, and/or services for various projects in connection with the City Council Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Three, and providing for payment of costs by transferring twenty-five hundred dollars to Hilltop Alliance. Total cost of District Three Neighborhood Needs Project is not to exceed fifty-one thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents." Bill Number 606. Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution number eight fifty-five entitled, "Adopting and approving the Twenty Twelve Capital Budget by transferring twenty-five hundred dollars to Hilltop Alliance within District Three Neighborhood Needs."
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Yes, I'd like to make, yes, I'd like to, I'm happy to discuss and just explain it, but I want to make a motion to amend Bill five twenty-four.
We have a motion to amend. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I'd like to just address the amendment that members have in front of them. So this is the one for deceptive advertising by CPCs. This, these amendments, well, first off, let me thank council and also our law department and sponsors of the bill that, you know, all worked on some of these changes and we talked through some of them, which, which are, was adding a three-pronged definition for deceptive advertising that more clearly defines and also mirrors the PA Unfair Trade Practices and Consumer Protection Law Act. It also adds a definition of reproductive health care services and also adds to the enforcement section that a, an appropriate city department would be picked by the mayor's office and there's a complaint procedure outlined. And if the department finds CPC to be noncompliant, they refer that to the DA for criminal investigation under the, the law that regulate, regulates, law regulating unfair trade practices and deceptive advertising. So with that said, you know, I just, I just want to recognize everyone that, that worked on this very last minute, even today. Law department was even very helpful with some of the changes that were sent over yesterday and spoke this morning to make some critical technical changes. And I want to especially thank my staff from Mohammed Burney for really working at a, at a, at a really pace that was, uh, let's say it's, it was picked up a bit multiple times. So appreciate all your efforts.
Councilman, any other members? I just want to thank you, Councilman, for making sure you worked through to make the amendments, especially after we heard public comment and that you worked with the law department, thank them. And Mohammed, Mohammed works late hours, he's here all the time. So thank you all for, for your work on the amendments. With that said, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those, oh, no, wait, we're voting for the amendment first.
Yes.
Okay, we didn't vote for the amendment. So all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, on the bill itself. Any comment on the bill itself? Bills itself? No? And the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye, all bills.
Four thirty-seven.
I'll repeat that, my mic was not on. Aye in all bills except for Bill twenty twenty-two zero four three seven, I will vote no.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes on all bills, but Bill four set, four thirty-seven, which has one no.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to myself. Sorry, Committee on Public Safety Services. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number six oh eight. Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number six oh two. Resolution amending Resolution one seventy-six entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Grant Agreements to Receive Funding from the Allegheny County Health Department to Develop a Public Health Informed Diversion Program and Further Providing for Expenditures Under the Terms of Said Agreement to Correct the Amount Authorized by the Grant Agreement and the Amount Authorized for Expenditures."
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number six oh nine. Report of the Committee on Public Works for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number five thirty-seven. Resolution amending Resolution number twenty-two twenty-four effective May seventeenth of twenty twenty-two, which authorize the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or the use of existing agreements between the city and Sasha Reeson for the creation and installation of public art at Arsenal Park by authorizing the agreement to be made with Mango Tava, Inc., on behalf of the artist. Bill Number five thirty-eight. Resolution amending Resolution five fifteen, which authorize the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the city to execute an amended professional services agreement with Rig Pacific Company for the manufacturing and distribution for recycling containers and provision of containers for the payment at a cost not to exceed two million six hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Bill Number five forty. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development's Greenways Trail and Recreation Program to provide funding for the Green Boulevard project. The grant proposal includes an ask of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a local match of three hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-three cent for a total cost not to exceed six hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-three cent for this stated purpose. Bill Number five forty-one. Resolution providing for an agreement with SAI Consulting Engineers, Inc. for costs associated with the CBD Signal Phase Four project, providing for the payment of costs not to exceed five hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Bill Number five forty-two. Resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into certain temporary construction easements in order to advance the El Paso Street Landside Park project. Bill Number five forty-three. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Trail Development Fund for the construction of the West End Trolley Trail in an amount of one million five hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Bill Number five forty-four. Resolution providing for a supplemental agreement for professional engineering design services with Trans Associates Engineering Consulting, Inc. for the Penn Avenue Phase Two Reconstruction Project at a cost not to exceed one million five hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-five cent, an increase of eight hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-four cent from the previously executed agreement. Bill Number five forty-five. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with WSP Global, Inc. and/or its subsidiaries, WSP USA, for a period of two years for management services in conjunction with a comprehensive bridge asset management program at an amount not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars. Bill Number five forty-six. Resolution authorizing acceptance by the city of the dedication of Station Street located in the Larimer Phase Two, Phase Two Plan of lots as recorded in the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate in Plan Book Volume two ninety-four, pages thirty-one in the eleventh ward, ninth council district. Bill Number five eighty-two. Resolution providing for an agreement with Swank Construction Company, LLC for the construction phase of the Thirty First Street Bridge Preservation Project and providing for the payment of costs not to exceed one million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number five eighty-three. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the Board of Public Education of the school district for the Board of Public Education to grant for the city of Pittsburgh's successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at the city's own cost and expense a ball-playing field to be located on the grounds of Pittsburgh Phase Y on K through five school at the seventy-four thirty Toga Street in the thirteenth ward. Bill Number five eighty-four. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the South Side Community Council, an organization of the city to grant to the South Side Communities Council its successors and assigns the privilege and license to improve and maintain Esther Plaza at twelve hundred East Carson Street in the seventeenth ward of the city. Bill Number five ninety-six. Resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Oak, Old Oak Drive located in Banksville to be, to be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section one forty, one four seventeen oh six of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, may I briefly?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President. On Bill five eighty-four, which is giving the, the license to improve and maintain Esther Plaza to South Side Community Council, I just have to give a shout-out to the community council and everyone involved, friends of Esther Plaza, for the amazing work that they've done, the fundraising that they have done to make the improvements in Esther Plaza. And it's really my pleasure to vote the bill through today and ask for the support of all my colleagues. So, thank you, Madam President, very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything else from members? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to
Resources for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number five fifty-four, Resolution Providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with UPMC Mercy in connection with the administration and evaluation of medical examinations and related tests and procedures for the Civil Service Commission's Medical Examination Program for current and prospective employees for employment and promotion and providing for the payment of costs not to exceed one million, two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please, call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Ms. Gross? Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to... sorry, uh, Councilman Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been going on my pages.
Councilman Kraus presents bill number six ten, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number five fifty-four, Resolution Providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with UPMC Mercy in connection with the administration and evaluation of medical examinations and related tests and procedures for the Civil Service Commission's Medical Examination Program for current and prospective employees for employment and promotion and providing for the payment of costs not to exceed one million, two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Ms. Gross? Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Six members, or, yeah, six ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President.
You roll fast.
Councilperson Strasburger presents bill number six twelve, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number five sixty-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution sixty-five, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into a maintenance agreement with OPEC Corporation for Maintenance Services related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Workstation, workstation by adding a year of maintenance for the second machine at a cost not to exceed ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Bill number five sixty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a software maintenance agreement and amendments thereto with C.I. Technologies, Inc., for maintenance and user support services for subscription-based licenses for internal affairs and professional standard software to be utilized by the city's Bureau of Police and Office of Municipal Investigation at an overall cost not to exceed thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Bill number five sixty-nine, Resolution Amending Resolution five ninety-three, a Resolution Amending in Agreement with EDOC Technologies, LLC, for licensing services and maintenance and support services to provide imaging and document management services to include police documents at an additional cost not to exceed four hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Bill number five ninety, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into a maintenance agreement with OPEC Corporation for Maintenance Services related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Workstation, workstation by adding a year of maintenance for the second machine at a cost not to exceed ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Bill number five sixty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a software maintenance agreement and amendments thereto with C.I. Technologies, Inc., for maintenance and user support services for subscription-based licenses for internal affairs and professional standard software to be utilized by the city's Bureau of Police and Office of Municipal Investigation at an overall cost not to exceed thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Bill number five sixty-nine, Resolution Amending Resolution five ninety-three, a Resolution Amending in Agreement with EDOC Technologies, LLC, for licensing services and maintenance and support services to provide imaging and document management services to include police documents at an additional cost not to exceed four hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Bill number five ninety, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Open Innovation Plans, LLC, for records management software services at an overall cost not to exceed one hundred four thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Ms. Gross? Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. This is a packed agenda.
Councilwoman Gross presents bill number six thirteen, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number five oh two, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Inter-Municipal Transfer of a Restaurant Liquor License from China Palace Restaurant to the applicant Zeshuan Spice, Inc., for the premises located at fifty-seven hundred Center Avenue known as Zeshuan Spice Restaurant pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code four, four, six, one. Bill number five forty-seven, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the U.R.A. and Cedarwood Homes Holding, LLC, for a related entity for the sale of block seventy-eight, lots three and ten, and block seventy-e, lots one eighty-five, two forty-one, and three seventy-five in the twenty-eighth ward of the city. Bill number five forty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the twenty-fifth ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, it's block twenty-three B, lot two twenty-six, and council district number six. Bill number five forty-nine, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the U.R.A. and Katie Haller for the sale of block fifty-F, lot one forty-eight, in the tenth ward, council district number nine. Bill number five fifty, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the U.R.A. and Lech, LLC, or a related entity for the sale of block nine R, lots one sixty-three, one sixty-four, sixty-five, and sixty-six, the third ward of the city, council district number six. Bill number five fifty-one, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the U.R.A. and the Redevelopment Authority and One Call Handles It All Landscaping and Trucking, LLC, for the sale of block one seventy-five C, lot three oh eight, in the thirteenth ward of the city, council district number nine. Bill number five fifty-two, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the, to be vacated right away adjourning the publicly owned properties in the twelfth ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as block one twenty-four K, lots sixty-five, sixty-six, seventy-one, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-eight B, one twenty-nine, one thirty, one thirty-one, thir- one thirty-two, one forty-seven, and one forty-nine. Council district number nine. Bill number five fifty-three, Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement with the U.R.A. for the performance of certain work in connection with the Penn Circle Two Way Conversion and Providing for the payment of costs not to exceed one million dollars, council district nine.
Thank you. Did we do this one, Madam Clerk? The one Councilman Lavelle had? Did we do?
Motion's and resolutions.
Okay. Do you want to do it now? Yeah, please. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
It'll be on the...
It's under my committee.
It's under his committee.
Yeah, we should have did it under there. Okay.
Just do it under motions.
We'll do it under motions and resolutions. Okay. All right. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Ms. Gross? Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now, we run to motions and resolutions. Councilman Lavelle?
Yes, uh, Clerk, do you please read bill five eighty-eight?
Bill five eighty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Meyer, Ankovich, and Scott for expert legal services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
There's no motion yet.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Okay, I couldn't remember. Motion to approve in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we go roll call vote? Okay. Can we do a roll call vote on this? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. Coghill?
Ms. Gross? Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed, and that moves us on to meeting announcements. Um, as a reminder, council's recess begins tomorrow, Wednesday, July twentieth, and will end Thursday, August nineteenth. Our next regular meeting will be Friday, August twentieth, at ten a.m. Um, do we have anything from members? I just want to thank you all because you've been doing such an amazing job helping me get through this, but also cheering your committees. You've been all do, do such a great job cheering every committee you're, you're working on. Um, and we're just down to about, uh, seven months with the new administration, and I think that, uh, we're starting to really get some momentum and building some good relationships and seeing some positive things happen, so I want to thank them for their work and looking forward to working some, you know, some more in all of our neighborhoods with them. Um, I do want to say, when we return, we have a lot, a hefty schedule. We have the trust, well, we have the Wilkinsburg, um, annexation, possible annexation. We have an election for Councilman McConner's seat, and we have, um, the restructuring of committees. We're going to restructure the committees. I've been talking to members about, you know, changing the committees to be, uh, more reflective of what the, um, works, the work happening in those committees and... wait a minute. Yes. And, um, and that, uh, so we'll be working on, to make sure that the, um, these committees reflect the work that we're doing. And Councilwoman Gross and I have been talking about the trust funds and some concerns that